It's one minute by Horizon time. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, November 24th, 2015. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. And before you do the invocation, let's take a moment and remember the innocent lives in France that were taken last week. Let us pray. Yes, Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight in this time of year that's -- we call Thanksgiving. And we truly do have an abundance of Thanksgiving to thank you for, to give back to you. But Heavenly Father Jesus, we're in a world of unsettlement. It just seems that there's so much going on in France, in other nations, and right here, Heavenly Father Jesus, in our own country that you've given us, in this United States, Heavenly Father. At this time of year, we want to say, "Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the abundance." Thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, because you've led and guided us and watched over us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for all those many things that you give us that we sometimes don't seem to grasp or understand. But we know tonight, Heavenly Father, there's an awful lot that's without a home. There's an awful lot, Heavenly Father Jesus, that's gonna see this Thanksgiving season homeless and without food or warmth. But we want to thank you, Heavenly Father, because we know that through you, you're gonna provide a way. We thank you tonight, Heavenly Father, because we as residents of this great city that we live in, you've provided us with leaders, Heavenly Father, that are honestly doing what they can, Heavenly Father, to ensure that things are taken care of, that they diligently work on all the many things that they have to as far as regulations are concerned. I know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that today we were so thankful because it seems like in this season you're providing some water for this great state that we need. But Heavenly Father, all we have to do is drive down those streets and see the beauty that you've given us, the wonderful, wonderful color in all the trees, and to thank you, Heavenly Father, to thank you each day. We thank you tonight for the leadership that you provided for each person that works for this city. We thank you tonight for the great country that you've given us. And we ask you tonight, Heavenly Father, as we give thanks back to you, that you bless this great nation that we have. Oh, bless this great United States of America, Heavenly Father. And let each one of us, as we gather around our Thanksgiving table on Thursday, let each one take the time to thank you for the abundance that you have given. And we ask you tonight to be with each one of us, be with our servicemen and women wherever they're at, Heavenly Father. Lift them up, watch over them, lead and guide them, Heavenly Father, but let them know that you're there and that we are praying for them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Please be seated.
Roll call. Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda items to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we move forward with item 1.1, Presentation of the Budget Advisory Committee Recommendations.
Yes, Mayor Members of the City Council, Arlene Figueroa, Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee, is here this evening representing the committee and presenting the recommendations that have been formulated over the course of the last several months as they've reviewed the budget. And we certainly appreciate her work as well as all the members of the commission that have worked very hard to review each and every line item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. The Budget Advisory Committee has been meeting on a monthly and sometimes bimonthly basis with the goal of formulating recommendations for the council that should be into consideration that may provide the city with solutions to closing current and future budget deficits. Having reviewed all the department budgets over the past several months, the committee has now formulated recommendations that will allow the city to work towards presenting a balanced budget currently and in the future. The recommendations that are being presented to you hope to create a long-term impact on the city's budget, thereby allowing the city to balance the budget and not depend on reserves to cover on ongoing expenses. In addition, several of these recommendations are made with the intention that the city be fiscally prudent when procuring services or purchasing equipment from vendors. Recommendation number one, the City of Riverbank should consider forming an annual review of all recreation program fees to reflect seasonal adjustments. Rationale, by reviewing rates on a seasonal basis, the city can ensure that the fees are adequately recouping city costs, including cost increases in utilities and other fixed costs. Recommendation number two, the City of Riverbank should consider issuing a Request for Proposals, RFPs, for landscape services for both parks and landscape and lighting districts in the fall. The city should consider issuing an RFP for the service every five years. Rationale, a quest for proposals should ensure that the city is obtaining the best service at a low cost. Recommendation number three, the City of Riverbank should consider the following proposals related to the Riverbank Teen Center. A, research grant opportunities that would allow the city to offer a larger variety of teen programs in the teen center, such as job searching and college application assistance. B, revisit the proposal of assessing a $25 membership fee for the teen center that would help to generate revenues to offer programs for our local teens. As part of this review, the city could consider developing different payment options to allow teens to pay their annual fee on a monthly or quarterly basis. The city could also explore the opportunity for nonprofit organizations to sponsor the membership for teens who may be going through a financial hardship. C, explore the possibility of corporate or business sponsors for the teen center. The city could advise these sponsors through their -- advertise these sponsors through their website or other special social media in exchange for their sponsorship. D, evaluate the possibility of renting the teen center for small parties or business meetings. Rationale, the recommendations -- these recommendations are made with intent to generate revenue that would help to offset the costs associated with operating the teen center. It could provide funding for beneficial programs for our teens. Recommendation number four, the city should review and/or develop a city vehicle use policy to ensure that the city is not exposing itself to any workers' compensation, risk, or liability by the use of city vehicles to and from the work site. The vehicle use policy should also address the use of city vehicles for personal use. Rationale, reviewing an existing policy or developing a vehicle use policy would help the city to avoid unnecessary fueling costs associated with the personal use of city vehicles and would help to eliminate the city's exposure to workers' compensation claims and liability issues. With these recommendations, the committee hopes to be able to provide the city council with ideals that will help provide a more balanced budget and will help with the long-term financial stability of the city. Sincerely, the Budget Advisory Committee, Chair Arlene Figueroa, Vice Chair Anthony McKinney, Committee Member Evelyn Halbert, Committee Member Cindy Fozzie, Council Member Leanne Jones Cruz, Council Member Janine Tucker.
I want to thank you and your committee for all this hard work. Do we have a vehicle use policy?
Yes, we do have a vehicle use policy, and I believe that addresses most of the issues, but we can certainly review it to make sure that that is the case.
And are there any issues with what the recommendations towards the teen center? We had a -- for the monies or the grants that we had, weren't there specific guidelines to go along with that?
There are some guidelines. The plan is for the -- to come back and review and provides the staff's perspective on the Budget Advisory Committee recommendations at a future meeting.
Okay.
And so there's a little bit more time to talk through each of those recommendations, and we can provide you an update on the policies that currently exist.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Arlene, and again to your group, that was fantastic, what you did for us over the year. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, excellent work, thank you.
Public comment, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, California, 6261 Roselle Avenue. It has come to my attention that Roselle Avenue is being upgraded, putting sidewalks. Thanks be to God. Thank you, Lord, for guiding these -- our officials of the City of Riverbank to finally get to the point now we need the other side also. Let's start getting some grants from Transportation Department and get the so-called industrial side of Roselle Avenue between Patterson Road to Clarabelle Weekend. Why not? We're there already. And I thank you for the efforts that you have made about this, and then we're expecting that not too long from now it will be also across the street. I've been talking to Mr. Michael Moynshine, and he's willing. I saw some of the machinery that he uses, the street of Roselle, there by Ward and then at the top of Ross. And I'm pretty sure that could be arranged in order to get us some of that part for a wider sidewalk across the street from Roselle from where it's built right now. It's being built, and also would be very much appreciated if the police departments and some of the patrols there mainly, when the children coming in and out of the buses from school, they cannot walk right now because they have to be on the street. They cannot walk on the -- there is no sidewalk right now. And across the street, it's a lot of trees, and there is no sidewalk really across the street. So there was an invitation not too long ago to walk to school. Well, sorry, walk on the street if you're going to walk to school, which is not too safe. And if at those times, it's very much appreciated when there is the most traffic of so-called rush hours when in the morning, it's really late, two rush hours, and two in the afternoon, the most busiest part. For these drivers, whoever here is present, I beg you, please slow down wherever there is construction. Don't end up passing cars on the opposite side when there is cars coming the opposite direction. And be very careful with pedestrians, please, those that are on the street. We have to be walking on the street right now. And also, before I forget, have a happy Thanksgiving Day, everybody, and may God bless you all. And we keep on thanking God for all the goods that he has given us. Thank you very much.
I'm Diane Talbert. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of Royal Neighbors Riverbank. And mayor and council members, I'm here tonight to thank you for attending our annual Veterans Luncheon that took place on the 7th of November. It was kind of you to once again act as our annual honorary servers. And I wanted to let you know that per comments during our luncheon from the veterans and their guests there, that it showed them that Riverbank really does care, that you were all there. And I'm hoping that you can join us again next year on November 12th, and we're gonna have our luncheon again. And thank you once again, and happy holidays.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I know where Mr. Bermudez could get some concrete, sort of at Crawford and Oakdale Roads. We hear a lot of stuff that's bad news, and this weekend we had sort of some good news. The Christian Food Sharing and St. Vincent de Paul put on a joint turkey drive. It was held last Saturday in an effort to gather funds and turkeys and other food for the giveaway that's in December, just before Christmas. The thing that was great about it is we had some young kids from Cardoza that were helping us there. And they were getting public service hours and enjoying it, but seeing what goes on and understanding what we were trying to do. The other thing that's just really great is to see the people that donate stuff. They're not from the top of the salary list. They're people who've felt the pain of not having food all the time. They don't have the big salaries, and yet they're able to help either with a dollar or two or maybe even a turkey. So it's really a great deal. We collected quite a bit in funds and a number of turkeys and really set us up great for the Christmas giveaway. So I thank the community for that.
The Riverbank Ministerial Association is beginning to come alive again with the help of Pastor Trudy Jewell. And we'd just like to say that, you know, we're here to offer anything we can to help the city in any way that we possibly can. We've had several meetings now, and things are beginning to get underway, and we're beginning to, you know, see some activity and see people that are interested in it. And on behalf of the newly formed Riverbank Ministerial Association, I'd like to say thank you to the City Council and happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays to the City of Riverbank, and we certainly hope you enjoy a bountiful Thanksgiving that God has provided for you. Thank you.
Haskell Moore, 3848 Patterson Road, Riverbank. I'd like to see something put on an agenda made up, if I could, about water and sewer. If perhaps that when you have a rental property vacant or any council vacant, that you can have water without having to have a sewer with it, sewer or garbage, when it's empty. And I'd appreciate it very much if you would do that, make an agenda and a council to vote on it. Yes or no, whatever. Thank you.
No further public comment, we'll move on. To the consent item, consistent of item 3A, wave readings. 3B, approval of October 12th, 2015, special city council minutes. Item 3B1, approval of October 13th, 2015, regular council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3B2, approval of October 27th, 2015, regular city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, declaring a certain property surplus of as listed in Exhibit A and authorizing its disposition. Item 3D, authorizing the executive director of the local redevelopment authority to negotiate and execute a contract for grant writing services as a result of a request for proposal. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the consent items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent item? Seeing none, I move back to the City Council for recommendations and/or action.
I so move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members, Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, second reading by title only, and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2015-018 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, repelling in its entirety Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 123, Tobacco Sales Licensing Requirements, and substituting it with a new Chapter 123, Tobacco and E-Cigarette Sales Licensing and Requirements.
Mayor Members of the City Council, a thorough staff report was provided at the November 10th City Council meeting. This evening, the item is on for second reading and with the recommendation to adopt. I'd be happy to address any questions regarding this. Donna Kinney is in the audience to address any questions that might come from you or the members of the public.
Any public comments?
Yes, Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, California. If there's gonna be a repealing of, if there is anything existing about the municipal code of ordinances for related to tobacco sales and e-cigarette sales, you're going to have a new chapter on that, substituting it for a new one. I still will insist that this is a time then that you can put the fines to the first time. Sold to a minor, and the retailer gets caught on it, to be $500. Second time, there is no baseball here. Second time, you're out. And have revoked their license, not only for tobacco, but also for the business itself. These are very serious matters. It's a matter of life and death. It's no joke about smoke, about tobacco. It's already, the cancer is spread due to tobacco. And I don't know how the federal, state, you want to count these, and municipal governments can handle this at night. I won't be able to sleep if I'm not doing my best to try to erase all of this stuff that is poison, not only for the young people, that they do get their ways, and adults unfortunately go and buy it for them. And no matter how much of those decoys the police put, it's minimal comparing to what really they get away with. And I would say this is a very good time for that. You can get a good start by saying the City of Riverbank is really the city of action by stopping the killing of people by tobacco and tobacco products like the e-cigarettes, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Bring it back to the council for action. Before I do, the City Council has taken action on something that the state is incapable of taking in action. So we are taking action. The federal government hasn't taken action, but we're taking action. So we're not doing anything, we are doing something. I'm sorry if I differ with your opinion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 4.1.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 4.1.
Council Members, Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Resolution, item 51, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank adopting a 2.5% Consumer Price Index increase in rate for solid waste disposal services pursuant to the 2014 executed franchise agreement with Jiltin Solid Waste, Inc.
Mayor Members of the City Council, Maricela Garcia, our Director of Finance, will be presenting the agenda report on this item.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. As you'll know, we are requesting a 2.5% Consumer Price Index increase for our solid waste rates. Just, I'll give you a little bit of background. Currently, Jiltin Solid Waste has provided service to the City of Riverbank for over 38 years. In October of last year, we did hold a protest In October of last year, we did hold a protest hearing for proposed rate increases for solid waste. New rates and a five-year franchise agreement that runs through 2019 were approved at that point in time. The solid waste services that we currently receive from Jilton include the ability to have a 90-gallon trash bin, a 90-gallon green waste bin, a curbside e-waste program, a curbside bulky item program. We have an illegal dump program that's available to the city. And during the holidays, we have the Christmas tree pickup program as well. So what this Consumer Price Index, or CPI, increase entails was actually part of the franchise agreement that was executed with Jilton Solid Waste. And it does state that the city will adjust the maximum charge for solid waste to reflect annual changes in the CPI. The rates are published by the Department of Labor for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose statistical area. And the adjustments will be based on the previous 12 months from July to August. There is a 30-day notification that is given to residents that was given the first week of November to our residents via the water bill, and it is required by the government The adjustment itself cannot exceed over 2.5% per year. And based on the CPI increase for our statistical area, we actually saw a 2.6% increase. But based on the agreement itself, we will not be requesting any increase over 2.5%. And so what will these rates look like for our residential and small businesses? We'll be looking at a 53 cent increase per month for our 90-gallon bins. So that's an annual increase of $6.36. For residents with the 30-gallon can, they'll see a 47 cent increase or a $5.64 annual increase. We do have discounts available to low-income seniors and disabled. And for those that have not yet applied and will qualify under this program, the applications are available online, as well as at City Hall North and City Hall South. Those seniors and disabled with the 90-gallon can will see a 40 cents per month increase or $4.80 a year. And those residents with the 30-gallon can will see a 35 cent increase or $4.20. We also have our commercial residents or commercial customers who will be experiencing an increase as well. Our commercial customers are now being billed by Jilton Solid Waste directly. And so the city no longer provides any billing services for our commercial customers. Jilton handles all of that. And so they were notified directly from Jilton regarding the rate increase. So tonight's recommendation is that the City Council consider adopting the resolution that would approve a 2.5 Consumer Price Index increase in solid waste disposal rates. And I do want to mention that there has been some feedback regarding why we saw a Consumer Price Index increase of 2.6%, whereas the federal government has stated to a lot of our seniors that there is no adjustment being made to their social security. The federal government does use the Department of Labor statistics, but they use, theirs is based on wages earned, and it is not based on consumer products, which is what ours is based on. So they're two different matrices that are used for determining whether there was a price index increase or not.
Thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing?
I do.
Can our residents move from a 90-gallon down to a 30, or a 30 up to a 90? And what does that process look like?
That process to move from a smaller to a larger bin or vice versa, they simply need to come into City Hall and request that. Jilton does request that they have the can for at least six months. And at that point, they can determine whether they would like to move back to the bin sites that they had before. But typically, it will take about five business days for them to process that and get the can out to the resident.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing?
Ramon Bermudez at your service from Riverbank. I had two different people that I helped, elderly people. They are, one of them is not able to read. And helping them out with their bills and stuff is, the word that one of them is going to tell me, this sucks. That's what he said when they increased the rates not too long ago. It was changed to a smaller can. What is the, oh, it's not there. Oh, it's not there. It's gone. Anyway, to the 30-gallon, I think it was. They didn't have any in the stock. So he waited about eight months before he could get that change that could have been from one month to the next one, or maybe the second month that they are charging him again for the big can that he doesn't get to fill in. Maybe in three weeks, he gets to fill in a big can like that. But anyway, one thing is when you call City Hall here, another thing is when you call Gilton give you one service that when it's related to seniors, they are more compassionate than City Hall here. They should more understanding. And Maricela, you say right now, we didn't get a raise over 2% or 2.3% or anything like that in our social security. Why is it that they keep on increasing and it goes immediately the next month? You know, give us six months, will you? I say again, I am a renter, and the things that keep on increasing, our landlord is not going to keep, you know, putting his money out because there is increases on the services and so on that we use. He's going to put it on us also. So there is no consideration either way, on either side. And that's not correct. I don't think that's too just, and that's not too fair. Thank you very much.
Couple of things wrong with this thing. Number one, Gilton's done a very good job, and I don't begrudge them the money that you're going to give them. The thing that's too bad about it is, like you say, the brain freeze, our treasurer said, was that using salary for the feds sort of relates to what we're doing. This valley is not making a whole bunch of dough. And so it's reflected in the federal rates. This thing of the Consumer Price Index, if you don't have the money, you don't buy this stuff. So I don't know who's doing it. But if you look at where it came from, it's the rich folk states, San Francisco, San Jose, that area. So they should not dictate to the valley. It's just a whole different deal. It's the same thing as we'll get on with water. The same thing. The rich guys go 20%, and us guys do 36%. So there's nothing you can do about it. You're bound by your contract. That's what it is. You're doing the public hearing, so that's fine. But it's a bad standard.
No further public comment. Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the council for any comments, questions, and/or action. For Maricela, I know that there hasn't been much movement in wages in our area. I know there has been great movement in the Bay Area. Are we bound by the regional, or can we make it more local, like through the MPO, Modesto MPO?
We are bound by it through the contract.
So next time we write the contract, could we rewrite it differently?
We would definitely bring up that suggestion to them.
Any other comments, questions? Would like a motion?
I move that we accept item 51 as so stated.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt and a second on item 51.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
No.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Item 5.2, conduct the third public hearing to consider and select a council member district boundaries map and adopt resolution number 2015-092 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, establishing the council member district boundaries to implement a by-district-based electoral system, beginning with the November 2016 general municipal election.
Mayor members of the City Council, this is the third public hearing in regards to a review of potential maps that might be put in place if the City Council determines to go to by-district election. Justin Levitt from National Demographics Corporation is here again this evening to provide an overview of the four maps that were selected at the last meeting for further consideration and to be able to address any questions about that, as well as present an option that was suggested by a member of the public through that process. Some of the other maps do include slight revisions by, based on some of that public input as well. So I do want to let the council know that the public input that was received throughout the public hearing process and the community hearing process have been reflected in the maps.
Make it a quick overview, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for those of you who may be watching at home or have not, are here for the first time tonight, I just wanted to briefly summarize that the amount of public hearings that we've held, this is the, I think, 14th time I've been up to Riverbank to present on this matter, including six public forums held throughout the city going back to March. And this is the third public hearing we're holding here at City Hall. In addition, before these public forums, we adopted criteria. And I really have to give another shout out to city staff and thank them, especially Annalise, Joe, and Norma for all of the hard work they've put into this process. Now, in terms of where we are in the legal, sort of where we are in this process, today is the third public hearing. We held two previous public hearings on October 27th and November 10th. Today, we also will be introducing the ordinance in 5.3. That will be approved at the November 8th meeting. That's because there's new state laws that take effect January 1st. And so approving it in November allows us to reflect those new laws that are going to be going into effect on January 1st. These districts will first be used in the November 2016 election, in which the same number of council positions will be up in 2016 as would otherwise be up. So two positions plus the mayor seat will be up in 2016, and two positions will be up in 2018. The current terms of members who are elected under previous rules are not affected by this law. So those of you who were elected in 2014 will serve until 2018 in your existing districts, i.e. the city at large. Now, at the last public hearing, we looked at four plans. We narrowed the plans down from eight to four. And we have them here to summarize today. Plans A, sort of divides the city into quadrants. Plans E and F look at horizontal districts that cross the railroad tracks in order to perhaps make districts that include more diverse populations across the tracks. And Plan G, which was self-based on a public comment, creates a central district and then sort of three districts that are in the northwest, northwest, southwest, and on the eastern side of the city, in addition to that central district on either side of the railroad track. Now, as a result of some of the comments on Plan G, at our final public meeting on October 29th, a member of the public, Ms. Halbert, requested to look at a plan that kept the downtown area intact, but not crossed the railroad track. And so this was the plan that she came up with, working with me at that public hearing. This plan is population-balanced. And demographics, it's very similar to Plan G. Now, as a notice, because we take about 700 people from two and put them into District One, the pink-purple district, the central District G now comes into the southern end of the state streets, just below the state streets. And District Two gets population from right where my laser pointer is right there. So then these changes have to be made because there's approximately 750 people living in that portion of District G. That is between about Third Street and the railroad tracks. And so by moving those into District One, we have to make adjustments to the other But this does keep the downtown area intact, and it keeps it, you know, separates it from the areas west of the railroad, which was what her request was to look at. So with that being said, that's my overview of the plans as they stand so far. I'm happy to address any questions, especially as we move forward into the next stage of the process. And I'm happy to answer anything you want me to note. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing?
It's a Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, again. To consider very seriously here is the California Voting Rights Act. And it's 50 years ago that black population in Selma, Alabama, actually, they were forced by the government to, not to walk on a bridge. And as they insisted, there were so many of them hurt by the police. There was a governor from Alabama at the time, I don't even want to mention his name. He's not worth it, mention it. And he was so racist that he was completely against any of the black people to vote. On talks that he had with President Lyndon Baines Johnson, he had to come down a little bit from his horse because Mr. Martin Luther King, luckily, was still alive there and very much active on these matters. And this one, it's been a long time coming that our rights to vote do not be trampled on anymore. It's been 50 years over because around that time, everybody, black, brown, pink, or purple, should have been allowed to get these type of districts to have a better, fair elections. And we're just beginning now, 50 years later after Mr. Martin Luther King finally convinced President Johnson and all the people in the United States that it's only the just thing to do, the justice being served by doing this. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Diana Gonzalez. I live in Riverbank, 2554 Bradford Way. I'm here to support the district Plan G. And that's not the Halbert or the one, the new one that they put up there. Plan G keeps the districts together as in continuous, something that two of the districting plans selected at the last meeting do not do. That's Plan E and F. Plan G received the most public support and most votes during the town hall meetings that we had and the surveys that were handed in. I ask you to please not to disregard those votes from the city residents or the surveys that were written and submitted. I do have an edit to suggest on the plan, which is to add the Bradford Way thumb to follow the school district line. And that would be District Two to Three. But ultimately, my support is Plan G. Thank you for your time.
My name is Eva Muñoz. I have lived in Belgian Drive here in Riverbank for about 25 years. And I'm here tonight to support Plan G because three things. One, is Plan G keeps state streets together in District One, which I consider to be a community of interest. to be a community of interest, with many low-income residents who have lived here for a long time. Number two, Plan G received most public support during the past meetings. And three, Plan G keeps districts walkable and continuous. For these two reasons, I support Plan G. Thank you for listening.
I went to the meetings, and I supported Plan G also. But I think that the council's wise in giving the four choices. Those are good choices. And the total amount of people that went to those meetings is probably less than 50. And we have, you know, whatever it is, 12,000 people voting. So I think that this gives people a choice. I think G is a good, is a good choice. But the others there, A and E and F, or whatever they are, give people a choice in the matter rather than having just a few people decide it.
Hi.
You can move it down.
My name's Brenda Miranda. I live at 3672 Kentucky Avenue here in Riverbank. And I'm here to support Map G because this plan keeps all districts walkable, also because it received the most votes in the past meetings, whereas the other options did not reach so much as five votes. So if Plan G is adopted, District One would keep a community of interest together, this being the state streets, which mainly low-income residents living. Plan G is the best reflection of our neighborhoods. So I ask you, city council members, please listen to the 35 votes and those that spoke before me and support Plan G. Thank you for your time.
Any further public comment?
Good evening, Council. Virginia Meduano. I'm actually here as a resident of Riverbank, and I am also here in support of Plan or Map G. As somebody who grew up on the state streets, I can tell you that it is critical to be able to keep that community together, to keep that cluster together. And for the same reasons that many have expressed tonight, I think Plan G really is the most conducive for the future and for the overall success in terms of looking to represent the best interest of all Riverbank residents. So thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I close public comment. Bring it back to the council. And looking at the Halbert Plan and the other, and draft Plan G, most of the state streets virtually have the same boundaries. Yet, looking at all of the items, the idea is to give the protected group the best chance for representation. And Plan A has a 74% Hispanic with the highest percentage of voting age and the highest population for voting. Registration is 58%, although it is voter registration of 58% in some of the others. What is it in G? It's in G. So what is the legal terms on this, on what our responsibilities are?
In terms of the maps?
Right.
It is to select a map that meets the requirements of the California Voters' Rights Act, which is why we hired National Demographics to present the maps. All of the maps are legally sound.
Okay, so any one of them can be...
Yeah, it's to apply the criteria that you adopted in the initial resolution and including things such as, we mentioned, community of interest. It's a melding of all of those.
Okay. There are certain legal criteria that have to be met according to federal law, such as, population has to be substantially equal between districts, and the Federal Voting Rights Act has to be respected. And unfortunately, especially for the Federal Voting Rights Act, they're sort of, it's a broad standard. If you can draw a majority district, then you have to consider it. However, it's a totality of the circumstances argument where you have to consider it in light of communities of interest and other factors. And in fact, if you pack too many of one particular ethnic group in a district, then that could also be considered a problem.
Okay.
So, we encourage you to look at, that's why we have all those communities of interest, contiguity, all those other criteria that the state mentions, to try to give you some other factors you might want to consider, and not, you know, because you can't just consider race.
Comments or recommendations from the City Council?
I have a comment. I heard several people speak on Plan G about keeping State Street together. But when I look at Plan G, and I think they're all good plans, and if you look at the figures, the total figures, our consultants did an excellent job of balancing because they're all practically the same all the way down. But I see an area of State Street in Plan G that isn't part of there, whereas in Plan A, it is a part of there. And I'm just wondering about that when they said that Plan B, G, represented State Street more when Plan A actually covers the entire part of State Street. Likewise, too, I think any of the plans are workable because of the way our consultants put them together. And we just have to come up with a decision that shows, you know, we're doing this with the input of the public. I feel any of the plans will work. But I just wanted to point out that the comment about G covering State Street totally, A covers it better because it includes some streets that G does not.
And I think Plan G shows more of a better representation of the goals of the California Voting Rights Act. And so, I recommend Plan G. I think it's consistent with the goals that we're looking for. And I think that the whole purpose of getting the information from the organization that put our maps together is to try to keep our neighborhoods together, try to keep those interests together. You don't want to break up the city. We're dividing it up, yes, but you don't want to break it up more than what you really have to. And I think that Plan G is the better map.
Okay. So, is that a recommendation?
It is a recommendation for Plan G.
As we're still discussing.
I'm also in support of Plan G, Map G.
Okay.
I think we need to listen to what the majority of our public who came to the meetings, what their will is.
Although, looking at...
Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have the, do you have a slide of who voted for what? I know you did a while ago. Is it readily available?
Do we have the...
It's all right if it's not. I have it in here. But I just wondered if we had it on the screen, because it wasn't an overwhelming...
Well, it was 38 voted. It was 38. However, some were voted multiple times for it.
Yeah.
Which is fine. My problem with going to G, and I'll support what you guys want, but Plan G puts District Three straddling the tracks, whereas Plan A, it does, for District One, it goes up to the tracks, covers the entire State Street, although it does cut off at Stanislaus. I would have made the boundary up to 108.
So if I could, I can easily address that comment, is that there's too many people in that area for us to keep that entire area together. That's the same reason why in Plan G, we don't have all of the downtown area in District One. It may not seem like there's a lot of people that live in the old downtown area, but in a city of 24,000, even 100 people can make your deviations go double what they were when you move a block from one to another.
And I actually prefer draft Plan F myself. And I feel that, this is my opinion, so I'm going to say it, and I'd like to be able to say it without comments. Thank you. I think that Plan F also fits in with G because it actually has some of the same boundaries as the state streets, as G does, if you look at it, too. So, that's my opinion. I like F.
In the G plan, why is there a little dip in District Three? It's going straight along, and then it, I know that the school districts are there, but we cross the boundaries off and on.
This part right here?
No, go up to the little, right there.
Okay, so...
District Two.
It's a case of where the census geography doesn't really match the physical geography on the ground. What we're actually doing there is following the canal, or what the census labels as a canal.
Okay, then that's a natural boundary.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, that's what this line is, all the way between here and here.
And your deviations are not too far off on A, a little further on G, but within the guidelines.
Within the guidelines. That's why I like G.
All right. So we have two plans that have been talked about by, like, three?
Three.
A, A, G, and, A, G, and...
F.
A, G, and F.
All right. Let's start with number one, that we have made a recommendation. We have a motion to approve draft Plan G by Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve draft Plan G, and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
No.
Jones Cruz.
No.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2.
Again, this is going to be redrafted in four years.
I'll point out that things like annexations and changes to the city boundary will affect populations overall.
And the census.
And the census.
Item 5.3, conduct the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 52015-019 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title III, Administration, Chapter 30, by adding Section 30.03, Council Member Elections by Districts, to Riverbank Code to establish that election of city council members shall be by districts.
Members of the City Council, now that the map has been adopted, this is the change to the ordinance, a change to our code to reflect the move from by district, excuse me, to reflect the change from at-large to by district, should the City Council approve this amendment. Annabelle Aguilar, our city clerk, will provide an overview of the proposed amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So, tonight's public hearing is for the amendment to the Riverbank Municipal Code to officially change to a by-district electoral system. We're going to be adding new Section 30.03, which is the council member elections by district. And that'll be to Chapter 30, under Title III, Administration. Now, the transition, next step. After we just selected and adopted a map depicting the four district boundaries for city elections, our next step, of course, is to officially amend the Riverbank Municipal Code. This ordinance provides for the election of four council members, one from within each of the four districts, and we continue to elect the mayor citywide. This change is in furtherance of the purposes of the Voting Rights Act of 2001. Ordinance, Section 30.03, provides for elected members of the city council, which shall consist of the mayor and four council members each to serve a four-year term. Now, this ordinance is to change how the four council member seats will be elected in the future. So currently, we're at an at-large election system, which means the four council members are elected by voters citywide. We are transitioning to a by-district election system, which means the voters of each of the four districts shall elect one council member. Voters can only elect a council member that is a candidate of their district. Candidates and elected council members must live in and be a registered voter in the district in which he or she lives in. And then again, of course, the mayor will continue to be elected at large. The transition period from at-large to by district. So, we are planning to implement this by-district election system with the November 2016 general municipal elections. So the even-numbered District Two and District Four shall be elected council member seats, the mayor seat elected at large. So this means, for the November 2016 general municipal elections, the terms of office expire for Council Member Barbara Martinez, Council Member Tucker, and Mayor O'Brien. The seats currently held by Council Member Campbell and Council Member Jones Cruz will be designated District One and District Three, whether or not they reside in that district. They were elected at large, and they continue to represent Riverbank citywide. The electoral system transition completed. So, we head to November 2018 general municipal elections. The odd-numbered District One and District Three shall be elected for the 2018 general municipal elections. Terms of office expire for Council Member Campbell and Council Member Jones Cruz. This will complete the transition to a by-district electoral system, and all four council member seats will then be established by district. Now, in proposing this ordinance, which is number 2015-019, we are recommending a change under B1, which is boundaries and numbering of each district. And it will be the sentence that begins, that states, "The four electoral districts for the council are set forth in Exhibit A." We would like to change in Exhibit A to read "by city council resolution." So, after this long journey, we are one step closer to completing the transition. And our recommendation is to approve the first reading and introduction of this ordinance, number 2015-019, with the amendment proposed, and schedule its second reading for the December 8th, 2015 city council meeting to consider its adoption. If there are any questions.
If Council Member A's term is expiring next year, and Council Member C, who's not expiring until two more years, live in the same district, Council Member C can go after Council Member A's seat, and if they lose, they still retain their seat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
But if they win, they're the vacancy, and then they're selected, or whatever the process is.
Right.
Okay. This is a public hearing.
They have no choice. Good evening. I'm Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank. By your comment, Mr. Mayor, I am totally confused. What is the purpose of having this rigamarole going on? And these hearings also that people don't show up. If they don't show any interest, then they're going to get what they get. If there were 35 to 38 people that bothered to come to Old Tree, as I was one of them, then I do have a say in the matter. Those that haven't shown up even by today, I don't think they had that much interest on how the city council members are going to be in different districts now. As it is owed to justice for the California Voting Rights Act, it's been imposed in the matter of justice. And if this is going to be the resolution that you're taking on a matter that is so important, then I got confused in the last part, the comment that you made, that if they are not elected... they are not elected, they're still going to be City Councilmembers. There's going to be some type of election, some type of person that was elected as a new councilmember for the district. If they didn't win the election, then they lose, they are not councilmembers anymore. Am I correct?
That's not what I stated, but no.
That's where I got confused.
Continue with your comments.
But that's where I got confused. So, on this coming to this forum, which is the third one, it's still in the insistence of what the Plan G is going to do for the population of Riverbank is a matter of justice, again, is a matter of what the change of 50 years ago should have been, not just now and the next year, 2016, and then the other two for 2018. It should have been done 50 years ago, and it wasn't done. And that's why it's been imposed by law, not only California law, but also federal law. I hope I'm correct on that, sir. And I thank you very much.
I don't want to take a chance of being told to shut up again, so I'm going to ask you. I have a hearing difficulty. I don't have my hearing aid tonight. And did you say E passed or G passed? G as in gone?
We're now on 5.3, which is the resolution adopting G. We've already voted G in. We're on the next step.
That's my question, because I have a problem defining between E and G without my hearing aid.
Okay.
I can hear it, but I don't hear it clearly. I can't tell which one it was.
G, golf.
Don't. So, never mind. Thank you.
I don't have a piece of paper. Diana Gonzalez. And I want to thank you for your decision on G. I feel very strongly about the districting and the representation up in Riverbank. So, I want to say thanks. Good job.
This is a public hearing, and we are addressing item 5.3.
Eva Munoz, really brief. I just wanted to thank you also for adopting Plan G, and thank you for your attention and listening. Thank you.
Any further public comment? I've closed the public hearing. I bring it back to the council, item 5.3, which is conduct the first reading and introduction. I'd like to see if this can be introduced.
I'd like to make a motion that we introduce officially item 5.3.
I second.
Motion to introduce item 5.3 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
No.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Item 5.4, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, accepting the fiscal year 2014-15 annual AB 1600 report of system development fee activity.
Mayor Selah Garcia, our Director of Finance, will be presenting this annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, we have for you a presentation regarding the 2014 AB 1600 report of system development fees. So, what is AB 1600? It's part of the government code, and it sets forth specific requirements on how we impose, collect, and report the aspects of our system development fee program. It was effective January of 1989, and our system development fee program has been in effect since 1967. System development fees are defined as a charge by local government to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new development. The purpose of the fee is to defray all or a portion of the costs of the public facilities related to new development, and in order to serve this new population coming in. The legal reporting requirements that we are required to report at least 180 days after the last day of the fiscal year is we must include a description of the type of fee that we collect, the amount of the fee that is collected, the beginning and ending balances of each account or fund, the amount of fees collected, and if there was any interest earned, the identification of any public improvement for which the fees were expended on, and an identification of an approximate date by which the construction of future public improvements will commence. We also must include a description of each... Any inter-fund transfers or loans made from accounts or funds, and the amount of refunds that were made during a fiscal year. And refunds typically happen if there is a project that is not able to be completed. Refunds are made directly back to the developer who paid that particular fee. We do have two types of system development fee funds currently. We have inactive funds. So, these were the old system development fees that were established back in 1967, and that actually still have fund balances within them. So, we're no longer collecting revenue in these funds, but the expenditures that are made are included within our capital improvement plans and are based on the type of fund that is currently inactive. So, we have our bridges and roads funds, which we use on bridge and road work, our overpass fund, and our railroad crossing fund. The two funds that had activity during the year for our inactive funds include the bridges and roads funds, where we did have some interest that was earned. And actually, expenditures, you'll notice, was at a negative $10,003.87. We actually had a refund from MID for the Jackson Avenue sidewalk project. They did perform some engineering services for us, and we were able to collect a refund of the engineering services since they completed their work under budget. We also have our streets and public works funds, our Fund 145, and it's also known as our overpass fund. So, this one... This fund also collected interest in revenues, and we had expenditures with relations to the downtown-specific plan EIR, which was completed. And the reason why funds were used from this particular account was that they were evaluating the potential undercrossing at Santa Fe. We also have active funds, and so this is where we're actively collecting revenue from all new developments. And they are... Those funds are collected pursuant to our 2005 to 2020 growth-related public facilities needs reports, and now, under our 2015 Nexus Fee Study Report. So, the funds that are listed here, water, wastewater, crossroads, streets, and public works, crossroads, storm drain, and the crossroads, police, and general government, did not have any activity with them, so we're simply listing the balances that are remaining. Fund 205 is inactive fund, and it's our new streets and public works fund. We did have... Collect significant amounts of developer fees and interest because of the new activity occurring at KB Homes. The expenditures that were made from this particular fund are management fees that were reimbursed to our general fund for the maintenance of this program. Fund 208, or our storm drainage fund, also had activities. We also collected developer fees and interest. And we did begin the expenditures towards the rehabilitation of our Central Avenue, which will include the installation of a storm line. Fund 209, Parks and Recreation, we also collected developer fees and interest, and we expended about $90,000 towards Phase 2 of Silva Park. We also currently hold in reserve about $150,000 towards our skate park litigation. Fund 210, which is Police and General Government, we also collected additional developer fees and interest. We did expend monies towards the property improvements where the museum annex is currently located, and we also expended monies towards the design that was being prepared for that future building. We have two major upcoming projects that will be funded through our system development fee funds. The first is the traffic signal at Clarabelle and Roselle, and the second is that Central Avenue project, which will include the installation of the storm drain line, as well as the installation of a water line. And so, our recommendation for tonight is that the City Council adopt a resolution which accepts the fiscal year 2014-15 AB 1600 report. And this report was made available to the public on November 4, and it was also sent to the BIA in order for them to review. And I'm available for any questions.
Have any questions or comments for Mayor Selah? This is under public... Do I do a public hearing on this? Okay. I open the public hearing on item 5.4.
Charles Neal, 2312 Reoverted Drive, Riverbank, California. Boy, when that Fund 145 comes up, it just really, really, kind of, you know, makes me want to ask a few questions. You know, with electronics the way it is, and the ability to have video surveillance, a lot of cities are going to that, and it really helps out, you know. I'm wondering if, Marcell, if we could take some of those funds, like what's remaining in that one fund, 145, and maybe put that into some kind of a traffic surveillance fund, to where we can maybe get more cameras that can go right into City Hall. I mean, like the big setup that they have at the Galaxy Theater, not City Hall, but I mean, the Police Department. If we could have more of those throughout Riverbank, if we can utilize some of those funds. I don't know if that one fund, or if we have a fund, or if we can put together a fund or something, where we can get some traffic control funds to get better visual aids for the Police Department. At 145, if you guys had used that for that, I'd never say a thing more. No more to you.
I believe the chief would be happy about that. Any further public comment? I close the public hearing, bring it back to the City Council for action. And the action is to adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2014-15 annual AB 1600 report.
I move to re-accept item 5.4.
I second it.
We have a motion to accept item 5.4 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.5, expenditure of supplemental law enforcement services fund.
Mayor members of the City Council, Chief Kylie will be providing a review of the proposed use of grant funds. It is an appropriation that the city receives on an annual basis.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, come before you tonight with a recommendation that the City Council approve the expenditure of the fiscal year 2015-2016 Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund to help offset the cost of a sworn deputy sheriff position. This fiscal year, the city will receive $100,023.49 in additional SLESF revenue to be expended. It is my recommendation that the City Council authorize the expenditure of all these funds to offset the cost of a sworn deputy sheriff position, which is approximately $127,000, which includes salary and benefits. Legislation requires that the City Council hold a public hearing on the police chief's request for the expenditure of the funds, and act upon his request, and that the hearing be held separate and apart from the process applicable to the proposed allocations of the City General Fund. This is the time set for the public hearing. Background, which I'll bore you with here shortly. The Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund is a grant the state awards to all police and sheriff's departments. These funds are generated from statewide sales and use tax and distributed by the state controller. The minimum amount awarded to jurisdiction is approximately $100,000, which is approximately the amount that we receive. The legislature's condition on the expenditure of the funds is that jurisdictions shall appropriate the monies exclusively to fund frontline municipal police services in accordance with written requests submitted by the chief of police. Financial impact, $100,023.49 of state grant funds will be placed into the SLESF account, and the recommended expenditure for the 2015-16 fiscal year of the same amount. That's it. Those funds obviously don't go as far as they used to, so...
All right. I'll open the public hearing in a moment, just a couple of questions. If we had one officer per thousand individuals plus a chief of police, we would need a total of 25 officers. How many do you currently have?
We have 18 sworn, and that includes myself at present.
Okay, so you're seven down.
If you want to maintain the nominal, yes.
The nominal, the lowest, okay.
Well, what's supposed to be... What is recommended to be the lowest?
With the recommendation, taking a look at what's happened at Paris and some other areas in the world, and in the U.S., I think it's prudent that not only we accept this, of course, we're going to.
It's free money from the state. You never turn that down.
I have never turned down free money. But I think we should start looking at ways to get you to 100% and taking Reverend Neal's recommendation in some of the public areas, as you would like to have, the public surveillance, where you can tap in in case of an emergency. This ISIS is bringing its tentacles over here, and I used to be in red cells where it's very easy to divert attention one way and go to a local high school or a movie theater. And so, I'd like to see not only this accepted, but later on, that we truly look for getting you at fully staffed. So, thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing. Do I have any public comment? I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for recommendation or comments.
I move that we approve item 5.5.
I second the motion.
We have a motion to approve item 5.5 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to adopt emergency water restrictions in accordance with Section 6.5 of the Urban Water Master Plan adopted 17 January 2015.
Mayor members of the City Council, in spite of the rain that we've been experiencing in recent weeks, which we welcome with great excitement, the state continues to be in a severe drought. And as a result of that, the governor, Estat, has made a number of executive orders, one of which required the overall reduction of water in the state of 25%. And as a follow-up to that, there was an allocation of a percentage reduction to each of the water purveyors in the state. The City of Riverbank's water service was mandated to reduce water by 32%. That is something that we have not been able to achieve, and that has created a situation where we've received a notice of violation. And the concern is that we... If we do not take more significant action to impose restrictions on water use, that the state will do it for us. And so, this evening, we are proposing some additional restrictions on water use and some increases in fines that, while are larger than what we have in place now, are much... some increases in fines that while are larger than what we have in place now, are much less than what the state could potentially impose on us if they see that we are not taking action on our own. So with that, Mr. Michael Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, will present an overview of the proposed changes that we're asking the City Council to seriously consider this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As the city manager just stated, I will go through a quick overview on, on the governor's executive order. As you can see, on January 17th, he proclaimed the state of emergency due to the drought. On April 25th, the governor continued the state emergency. And then through Executive Order B 2814, the State Water Board adopted text which gave them the powers for the emergency regulations that are supposed to go through February 2016. You will see in a further slide that that now has the ability to be extended through to October 2016, if we do not get significant rainfall through January. And then the requirements of the executive order were for us to reduce, and as the city manager said, our target was 32%. And those numbers were based off of what we used in 2013 for the same months. So through the executive order, the urban water suppliers were required to go through and try to figure out a way to reduce this. And to do that, they went through and took a look at the areas where they had the high per capita use to achieve a proportionally greater reduction than those in the low use. And then reporting on the residential per capita, water use began in October 2014 for the September 2014 month. The residential per capita water use is highest during the summer months, obviously because the outdoor irrigation. And accordingly, September 2014 residential gallons per capita per day serves as a reasonable basis for the placement of the 411 urban water suppliers into four categories, or as follows. Now, these categories are set out by the amount of water used or in the per gallons per capita per day. That then was expanded to eight groups, which is what it currently is now. And those groups were to be able to get the conservation standard, which was to be effectively achieve a 25% aggregate statewide. And as you can see there, as if the drought persists through January 2016, the Water Board shall extend the 25% reduction until October 31st, 2016. So with that, we compiled some data that kind of shows what our total annual production versus population was. And you can see as the population kind of peaked out, dropped down, and then started to grow again, we have slowly been declining. Now, that last year obviously is not a complete year yet. And then in this graph, you can actually see it in a better light, where it shows population growth in water use. So we have been decreasing over a period of time. We just not have been decreasing enough at this point. And we have, I think that you'll see that, you see the downward trend now because of the efforts that we've put in, in the last several months.
For members of the public, might be watching, the blue line represents water use, which is declining, and the orange line represents the population, which is increasing.
So using that criteria and taking a look at the water use from June 2015 through December this year, we're looking at, June, we had a per capita per day of 171 gallons, which was a 21% reduction. In July, it was 187, which was a 20% reduction. And as you're all aware of, in August, we had 182 gallon per capita per day, which was actually a 17% increase over 2013. September, we dropped to 157, which was a 30%. In October, we dropped to 143, which is a 6%. Now, November and December's numbers, as you can see, are much lower. We got 76 and 102. But if you take a look at our target for the 32% reduction, that means in November, we have to get it down to 52 gallons per capita per day and 69 gallons per capita per day in December, which are going to be tough numbers. So to, to try to achieve those numbers, or to show the state, as the city manager has stated through the discussions that we've had with them, that we're doing everything we possibly can to try to adhere to the executive order, we have some proposed changes. And those changes are, as a use of landscape application systems will be prohibited from December 1, 2015 through May 1, 2016. Only hand watering will be allowed, and the person must be present to control the water use. So dwellings or establishments on even numbered streets shall water only on Tuesdays, so we're dropping it to one day a week. And dwellings or establishments on odd numbered street addresses shall water only on Fridays. So no outwatering, no outdoor watering will be allowed on the days other, when it's expressly allowed. So in other words, you only water on your day. And no watering may occur for 48 hours after a rainy event ends. So basically, like today, once it quit raining tomorrow, the next day, you're not allowed to water. So for, for two days. And then we also are proposing changes in the fines. And all fines will be due 30 days from date of issuance of violation. If no payment is received, the fine will be added to the next utility bill. The first violation will change from a warning to a $100 fine. The second, from a $20 fine to a $200 fine. The third, from a $50 fine to a $300 fine. The fourth, from a $100 fine to a $400 fine. And the fifth, and each violation thereafter will go from a $200 to a $500 fine. And it's also important to note that the restrictions prohibiting our outdoor watering between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. will still remain in place. So with that, the staff recommends that the City Council approve the proposed resolution, adopting revised outdoor watering schedule, and to implement the additional outdoor watering restrictions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor and council, you may have noticed that the City of Modesto is also moving towards a one-day-a-week watering schedule, as is the City of Turlock. The difference between the, the regulations that they're proposing and the regulations that we're considering here is that the proposal before you is to, to ask your consideration of actually prohibiting any use of sprinklers during the winter months. And that, that just makes it very clear that people have to turn their sprinklers off or, or face a potential fine. And that again, this is all about trying to demonstrate to the state that we really are taking the notice of violation seriously.
So what are our plans to get this proposal, well, to get the, if we do adopt this, to get the information out to our residents?
We already have a presidential newsletter ready to go. As soon as, or if it is passed, then obviously we will get that to the printer as quickly as possible and, and hope to get it out by the December 1 deadline. But what we've always done in the past, until we get the information to the residents, we don't enforce. So we give them a grace period, so to speak. We want to make sure that everybody is aware of it. And then typically, right off the top, we'll go out and have conversations with people when we have to reissue a violation. And there again, we'll do just like we did last time. It'll zero everybody out. In other words, they're going back to their first one. So when we go out and have the discussion with them, when we're seeing anything that's, unless it's very blatant, well, we'll go out and have a discussion with them, make sure that they understand. And if they have received that, then obviously we will issue them a violation. So in other words, if they have the information they needed to understand what we're doing. And we'll do the same thing as we did last time. We'll also issue a card that'll give them the information that when they can and when they can't water. And the door hangers, we use a door hanger that we use to issue the violation on it. It clearly states on that, that's, that violation slip, what the violation is for and which one it is, whether it's first, second, third, fourth. And we keep track of that through a spreadsheet. And also, anytime we go out and issue a violation, we take a nice color photograph of what's occurring. And obviously, residents have the ability to come into my office and either talk to myself or the water conservation individual to review that, so we can show them what occurred.
Michael, I'm assuming that businesses and industries are also going to fall under this, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm in a unique position of receiving inputs, elicited or not, in public comments. And today, I had a great number after a meeting with the city manager. A lot of people are confused. They're doing their job, they're cutting back on their water, but they have no way to measure how successful they are in cutting back their own. It was commented to me about, well, more times than I have fingers. And when will we have the capacity or capability of saying, okay, your bill this month, for the two months, you used an average of 110 gallons per day, where last year you used 140 gallons per day? When will we have that capacity? And it would be manual, I think, right now, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would. The problem we have, we have a couple of problems. A is the two-month billing, B the software that's currently being used in finance.
But the two-month billing is, is a period in time which you can, that you are charging, so you know what they used these last two months compared to last year at those two months.
That is a question for Marcella. I don't know if the, if the, if the software currently can do that. I, I understand what you're saying, and yes, it would be easy to extrapolate those numbers if you currently could pull that information.
We can do that, and we do do that on an individual basis when a resident comes in, as we do look at their prior year usage, if that's the, the question that they have. Currently, we are not able to print that on the utility bill, because the company that we use is fairly new, and they don't have any of our history. So we can attempt to extract the, the data that they need to do that, but it would probably take more time than we have.
Could we, without violating any privacy, post what a lot number used last year? And someone can go up and say, okay, O'Brien's lot number is here, what did he use last year, what does he use this year?
I would be really hesitant to post any of that information on the website in fear of violating any type of government code.
Okay.
There's a real discussion about that on our city attorney listserv, and it's really not decided at this point. What's appropriate?
Let me finish, Marcella, since you are the one, the, the front of this. We need to get a handle around it for those who need that information. I understand there may be a little bit of movement since the retiree is happening. Maybe we could use part of that to help get, probably against what you want to do with them, but at least get the information out to those, to the citizens on the, on their billing cycle. If you can build them. You need a bridge to get, to, to extract the, you need a bridge built in your computer software to be able to extract that information automatically, wouldn't you?
Yes, that's correct.
You don't have like $45,000 hanging around to build a bridge.
No.
We have a bridge fund. Where's Mr. Neal?
Yes. If our overpass fund is okay to be used, we can do that, but.
I don't think that would be the correct type of bridge.
I understand that, that was, I'm not, I'm not making light of it. I'm just, understand the frustrations.
And to point out that fact, too, that frustration will go away completely when we put the new meter system in.
I understand that, but that's years away to do it.
Oh, sir. We're hoping it's by, before, end of, before start of summer next year.
That'd be great. Okay. All right. So we're working on the issue that I asked about, that I now have more information than I did this morning.
All, all of that will incorporate, the software will incorporate, everything will incorporate with the new metering system. So it'll be easily, the, the data will be easily accessible, not only for us, but for the citizens as well.
Okay.
And Mayor, to your point, we're also working on the implementation of a new financial software system that the City Council strategically allocated funds for, for this budget year. So this time next year, we should be in a much better position to be able to address the questions that you've raised, and, and everybody would have an opportunity to log in and get the data on their own use.
Well, this is a draconian method, but this is a method that we have seen, I mean, we have seen the requests be ignored by a lot of people. When we went to two days a week, we still had people ignoring it. We have not met the goals, although I think some of our figures on pumping and maybe suspect, because even in August 2013 was extremely warm month, if you go back historically to the temperatures that you can go back on through MID. You could tell, I know we're closer to the river, and we're cooler than Modesto, we always have been, but, you know, you use an MID as Modesto, you could tell it was a warm month. Yet our usage in 2013 was extremely low, according to our figures, and then 2015, they are up 17%. It doesn't make sense. However, that's not making sense right now. What we have to do is take action. Any other comments before I turn it over to the public? Thank you, sir. Public input, please.
I'm very upset at both the City Council, this thing that you're proposing, it's all, it's the state, everything's screwed up. Okay, first of all, the people on the coast, they don't use much, they don't get penalized much, they don't feel the pain. That's a bunch of baloney. That's the problem. Everything is done by the coastal counties. Now, if you had to say everybody had to reduce 30%, they'd get their little amount reduced 30%, which is nothing. Our 30% is still big. But they didn't penalize them. The whole state should have been on the same program, that everybody got penalized 25 or 30, or whatever it is. Not these guys that don't need the water, don't have to get much of a penalty. Shoot, that's a drop in the bucket. 20% of nothing's nothing. But 30% of a lot is a lot of money, or is a lot of water. That's, that's number one. You can't do anything about it. But I'll tell you, our legislators ought to go after that. This stuff is all skewed to the other people. The salaries, everything else is skewed to those districts that don't have the same problems that we have. Number two, I went through, our, our city manager stated that landscaping was 80% of the water, so I went back through my stuff, through 19, 2014 and 2015. She was absolutely correct. That's what mine was. Exactly 80% was the landscape. Okay, so I dumped off, and we did it not mandatory. We did it when you said you can go to two days. My neighbors, I changed them. We, we shut down the water time. And what happened? I burned up my lawn, of course, except where the trees are. But we made an attempt, and I take daily readings. I go out there and I jack my lid off, and I read the stuff, except a couple of days when it's wet and you can't read the stupid thing. My bill, the readings for those days were exactly the same as what I have. So kudos to the water department, they got that right. It was right on the money. So I had it all up, and I took out the days that I watered and the days that I didn't water, and I looked at it. My stuff, one year over the other, was reduced 36%, okay? Now, I'm going to get jerked around by some screwball numbers, and August said that we went up X number, X number. Where's all the other people that should have done this? My neighbors did it, because I set their miserable water meters. And, and so they, and they have the brown lines, too. But it's just ridiculous that somehow or another, if everybody cut to that two-day thing, and why you guys, when they said, when you had, gee, you can cut to two, and everybody else is saying it's mandatory to two for a couple of months? Here, people were still watering four days and running down the gutter. It was terrible. So how can you expect any numbers when you don't, when you don't do that? But if you think some idiot's going to go out there with a hose and water is on and know what in the heck he's putting on there, he doesn't. It'd be no control. You talk about no control right now, you can't tell us from one year to the next. I can't, because I save all this stuff, because I'm a numbers freak. But, so he goes out there and he waters, he could put on twice as much water doing it by hand. How does he know? When I have my sprinklers, and I go out and check them, make sure they're not leaking and this and that, I also check the neighbors, you know exactly how much water you put on. I can tell you exactly on what date, how much water I put on. How are you going to do it when you're standing there with a hose? You can water the sidewalk as much with a hose as you can with an air and sprinkler. So that's a bunch of crap, that shouldn't even be, excuse me, shouldn't even be even considered. Use your sprinkler, have them done right, you can see them, and this, if you're out there and people have to go to work, they're not going to be there at a certain time in the morning to do it, they're working all day, then they come out and it's dark. And you say, you still can go ahead and water. Shoot, you don't know what they're doing. So if you have to go to one day, every lawn in this whole town's dead, I can tell you that. I changed my, I'm a botanist, I've got a degree in botany, a masters. I had nice roses and everything. Rip them out, put in drought resistant stuff. That's all watered with little buckets of gravy. That's all watered with little buckets of gray water. So I'm doing everything we can. We do the big wash, one wash a week. That's all we do. Thank God I have neighbors in the county. That's what keeps my trees growing. Every time they flush, every time they wash, it flows downhill. Water flows downhill. And I'm right on the border. I'm the last house in the county, in the city. So I get my trees watered, and people say, oh, my gosh, look, he's got his trees. And they're all, that's where I'm getting it from. Thank God they're there, otherwise it'd all be dead. So I think you really have to look at it. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, I tried real hard, and Mike's a good guy in telling you about what targets you should get, but as far as knowing, so you know if you're doing anything, it's a real incentive. When I saw my water stuff going down, two days a week, man, I look at those numbers. Wow, that's pretty good. I had an incentive. I had some enthusiasm to keep it down, even if I was burning my stuff up. But if you don't know, shoot, you think you're doing good and you're not. Or maybe you're doing very good and you're getting your stuff burned up. But if everybody who had sprinklers, and we have, what, 6,000 homes in the, in the city, had cut to two days and maybe cut a little bit, we also cut the time our water was on. Instead of on 10 minutes, it's on five or seven, something like that, then there shouldn't be this spike in August. I don't understand that at all. That's baloney. But things that I don't, I don't mind if you knock off December through whatever it is, the yards aren't using much water anyhow, transpiration rates are very low. But the hand watering is ridiculous. One day a week, you'll kill everything off. If people would just behave themselves and do the two days, you wouldn't have a problem if my numbers are any good.
Please don't leave. I want to have a, have a conversation since you are a botanist. Come back, I'm departing from my normal. I'd like to have a discussion with you right now. The discussion is that from December through May, those are your wet months.
Correct.
Those are where you have the least amount of need for irrigation or for watering.
That's correct.
Okay, if I still allow them to water, they're still going, people are still going to water.
Right.
Why?
Is force a habit or the fact that they don't change their miserable?
Okay, as a botanist in the Central Valley, okay, our biggest crop that we have in the Central Valley is lawn.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, now here's some things that nobody, this is, we're getting a little bit out here, but one thing is, everybody's concerned about global warming. The Amazons go into pot because guys want to plow it under and plant crops and so on. We used to have 200 trees per acre. Now, if you're lucky, you get one on a, on a place out there. The heat in my yard, when we moved in, is 10 degrees higher than after we planted lawn. So if you want to live in Phoenix, this is what you're headed for, because there's, there's, our soils compared to the Bay Area, I live in the Bay Area. My soil was clay. I could put on water, and I wouldn't wet or water my tomato plant for two months. Here, we have the best soils are sandy loam. It only holds less than an inch of water per foot. The stuff I was working with held four inches of water a foot. So I didn't have to worry about watering. Plus, the temperature was cool. Dublin, I used to come from here where I worked at 105 and go over there and it was 65 degrees. So 65 degrees, clay soil, little bit of water, they have no problems for this stuff.
Okay, that's, we're off the point.
Okay. Another point, another point I make, since we're up here, KB, what in God's name are we doing building new subdivisions when we're on a water ration? Now, those people are going to have to use water, and that's not in the figures in 2013. So we just added, it's only maybe 3 percent, 4 percent, but it's still a percent if all those people flush. Okay, now your next question.
My, my question, okay, is the majority of our water is in landscaping.
Correct.
For residential use.
Which your city manager?
Which is about 65 to 70 percent. You said 80. I don't think it's that high. It could be, depending on.
Yeah, it was at our house, because I had a lot of nice stuff. Notice it didn't have.
All right. During the month of December through May, do we need the water?
Probably not.
Okay. The ordinance is from December to May.
So what? What the use is going to be from May to?
No, no. Aren't we just going through, explain the ordinance.
Yes, the proposals before you this evening are to go from December 1 to May 1. And then we would, we would go back, the proposal at this point, we would expect to go back to the two-day-a-week watering schedule for the summer months.
That wasn't anything that I read.
That's, but that's.
All I read was we're cutting to one day and you're going to hand water. Now, if you're only talking that period of time, then I don't have as much of an argument.
That is.
If that was not clear, I apologize. That was the, yeah, effective December 1, 2015 to May 1, 2016.
On page four.
On page one of the staff report.
On page four, and this also.
Well, okay, that point was, was not clearly articulated. So if this is just through the winter, the wet months, is where this ordinance is coming in. Then we will revisit it at the time prior to, like, hopefully in March, so we can have it noticed in May, whether or not we're going to a two-day-a-week, if we are returning to a two-day-a-week watering system. Okay? The hand watering or the, the person being there, the way I interpret it, I don't read it, is that if I have a drip system going to my garden, I actually turn it on and I witness it, so I don't have breaks, I don't overflow, and I turn it back off. The lawn sprinkler systems, that's out. And hand watering a lawn is during this time of year, you don't need to do that. In fact, my weeds turned green over the last three weeks. So I'm getting back lawns in little clumps. I can't wait until May. Okay. Any other public comments?
I have a couple about that. To water with a water hose, if you get a water hose, it's got a 5/8 ID dimension, and you got a 3/4 inch water line. Some people have a half inch. It's just like turning water on full blast on your water hydrant, leaving it wide open, watering your yard with a hose. You've got sprinklers, you can put seven sprinklers watering with the efficient heads, and you wouldn't use no more than probably half as much or quarter of what that hose is putting out. To prove that, tag the valves on your lines, the heads, rather, on your line until the water pressure drops. Back up to the next one, that's where you close it off, you start a new valve with new sections of pipe and heads. I rebuilt two houses, water systems on my properties on Patterson Road this summer. I moved heads a foot in the yard, I went to efficient heads, cut down my water time. I even changed to a head that's really a pain. You got, you got to check them every time you mow, that they, they pop up and shoot straight out horizontally to water on a hill. Because thanks to the city, I now have a hill on the front of my front yard. It used to be flat because of what you did with the road, and you lowered the sidewalk and the curbs and gutters. And I would think that maybe you should be looking into something, and that was kind of late because of going into fall. This happened on July the 4th. I've seen it more than once. The park where the pool is, there must be a half an acre grass there. July the 4th, it's really easy to remember because I checked on something across town. I came back across town about midnight, and I came down Stanislaw Street, and the yard was watering, was the community center is and everything, and it was going 15 feet out of the street. And I understand from people I know that live in crossroads, same thing goes on late at night, crossroads on the main street, driving out to Home Depot. So now water, you're putting on these parks, if they're all being done like this, or if it was going on the park, I would think that would increase our water usage before we couldn't fit into that 32 percent, not just on the residential. What I see in my neighborhoods, when I, you know, as bad as first, I've seen in town where people was hitting the street with sprinklers, I think you might have talked to them because they started changing the way they're watering. But I'd say for the last two and a half months of the heat of the season, I ain't seen no water on the streets, not from homes. Maybe I don't know where it was happening. But I'm driving around this town every day, all day. I'm retired. So I think that a lot, I don't know how you water in Jacob Myers Park. I hope you're watering it with a river. I don't know. But I think a lot of your water waste, I know the park at the end of Stanislaw Street wastes a lot of water. The community center wastes a lot of water. I go around checking all of them. I know it's been done at night because you're watering at night. So I think that might be where we're going over. It has a lot to do with it, I know that, compared to the volume of water you're putting out on those type of heads that can shoot 50, 40 feet compared to what we do in our yards. Oh, one more thing I have to ask you. We had a water cot, we still have it, I guess, supposedly through November, as I understood it, for three months of the summer. We got $25,000 out of the water budget for this person. So these fines you plan on proceeding with all winter, is that person still going to be employed? I thought they were going to, you're going to let that person go in November.
That's a different topic. Then, that's a different topic than item 6.1?
I know, but we're paying for.
Okay, we'll address that separate.
I think we need to bring it up if we're going to be paying for it all winter. Thank you.
The topic is 6.1?
Mr. Mayor, listen, I'm Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, and I was reading this part of the use of landscape irrigation systems will be prohibited from December 1st to 2015 to May 1st. So next Tuesday, so May, December 1st. And then with continuing a little bit with irrigation of the parks, I had read to Mr. Michael that for one, Steely Park was very obvious on First Street by the skating park, that it was being watered, and it was at night. And I was suggesting to him the same as, pretty much the same as the gentleman before me, that all the parks of the city should have been checked to start with this, like right now, no watering. And then be the first ones to show by example that you are conserving water and to get it for better uses and that. And the other part was of, how can you get to catch up with people that do it at night? They water, they water at night, and they do openly, you know what I mean? There is nobody that can check them, and then there is the water going running down the gutter. I have an example on Jackson Street from the, it's a Apostolic Church or something like that. And I would have had to go and take a camera and then, you know, the picture and the timing and all of that stuff, and then bring it to Mr. Michael to go and talk to them. It's too much trouble, to the point that I say, a very good one that's been working, my landlord is very pleased with it, is putting a half a gallon of plastic container full of water, put it in the corner of the toilet where it doesn't get at all, and that's half a gallon each flushing that you do, that you're saving, that you are not flushing down. And it's been working, he's got a pretty good idea of thousands of gallons that he's going to be showing for next year that he don't have to pay for. Thank you very much.
You mentioned May 1st. So April 1st is really the time that the warm weather will start going on and stuff like that. So I don't know what, what survey they've done or whatever, how much water you use between, because you keep describing about May 1st is the starting of summer, but that's really the heart, that's the heat of the summer. Usually can be May, June. We've had, we've had a lot of 100-degree weather in April, so that really need to make a factor of that. We've had some very warm Aprils. Hopefully, we'll get a whole lot of rain in the next so many months that maybe you can change all this anyway, right? So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Elliott. I'm a business owner at 6331 Jackson. I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments about the water usage. As a business owner, one of the attributes that we work on is curb appeal. You know, we need to have a decent presentation so that people will feel comfortable patronizing our businesses. And regardless of what we might say, if that's in disrepair, that affects my business. And so I'm looking at that from the standpoint of saving water as I've been instructed, and also maintaining a decent aesthetic so that my patrons feel comfortable with coming to my, my, my business. So the issue of technology in regards to sprinklers, I've actually worked quite a bit with this at this point, redoing my yard with low-emission sprinklers. There's a, there's a ton of technology that's actually coming out of agriculture mostly. That's the reason we're able to put in all these other almond crops and lands that we normally have not farmed in the past, is they're, they're using low-emission sprinklers to do so. So those things actually emit very little water. Now, one of the downsides of that is with the restrictions, a sprinkler that emits very little water, if you water very little, you get even less water. So that, basically, some of these policies are heavy-handed. They're not nuanced, like some of the technology, some of the soil content, some of the, the regional weather patterns. They're, they're, they're done in a way that doesn't take any of those things into consideration. And I realize we're, we're limited in our local municipality about what we can do about that. But it is frustrating. It seems unfair. And so that's, that's the part I think that you're hearing a response to. I think that we go to hand watering from a business standpoint, either I hire someone to come out and hand water my yard that's a part of my office, or it dies. I mean, that's, that's what will happen. And so if, if that's the requirements here, you want my landscaping to die, then state it. This, this is all just backdoor saying that we can do these things to try to maintain the health of our yards. That, that's not going to happen. And so the, the reality is that landscape will die. And so we have to be prepared for that, I guess. It, it makes me apprehensive about further investments in low-emission sprinklers when really what we want is for my yard to die. So if that's the case, I don't need any sprinklers at all, right? I mean, concrete would make a good low-emissions yard. So, so that nuanced kind of thing, I think the, the idea of, of looking at the ability to measure how much individual businesses, individual property owners are using water, I mean, the, the reality is that particular resident might have a dead lawn, but they've also got no maintenance going on inside of their house, and all their faucets leak. I mean, there's no real comprehension of what individual usage is. So I, I think that that's the frustration that I have, is that we're, we're doing things in a, in a, in a heavy-handed, non-nuanced manner, and it, and it comes off as unfair. So I, I would, I would like you to at least keep that in mind, that if, obviously, if the state requires us to do these things, we have to do it in some manner. I mean, we, we're talking about residential water usage. The state mandate is for total water usage. The, the usage of, of water among residents is actually a small portion of total water usage. So we're, we're literally trying to balance the household budget by how much we spend on salt. I mean, that's what we're doing. So I, I know, again, that's outside of the purvey of this particular body here, but no one's really honestly talking about water conservation if they're not talking about the whole, rather than just this actually very, very small part. So, so again, that's, that's my frustration. Thank you.
Any further public comment? I bring it back to the council. Could you flip back to the chart that has the water usage going down and the population going up? This one here. If you take a look, well, our population growth continues to rise, but our total water consumption decreases in the residential. The state picked 2013. 2013 was, and 2012 were flat years. We had already known that we were going into a drought. We took our conservation measures in 2011 and continued to apply them. The state doesn't care. Cities that are not meeting the mandates, and they pointed, we were singled out in our August use. And we were, I'm not confident in all the numbers that we provided the state, but those are the numbers we have to live with and die by. Watering during December through April should not really affect your landscaping, whether it's micro or not watering at all. If we get the average rainfall, we got the average rainfall last year. We got 12.4 inches. During the time of, December through April, I had a nice lush grain lawn, and I didn't water. Right now, it's coming back because I didn't water. I'm sure some of yours are coming back. But this is through a time period where you have wet months, and the And the, why we picked through April is that the rainfall in April is close to two inches. Should be sufficient for your lawn. Now, some of your shrub, shrubs may need some additional hand watering because they may have the protected effect of it just falling off of the shrubs and not getting to the grounds around the roots. That's why the hand watering is being suggested here. I have no other reason to believe that no action or watering just once a week would bring us into the guidelines recommended by the state. Even this may not bring us into the guideline by the states, by the state. But if we take no action, some of the cities are getting fined $1,000 a day. And that just goes to the state coffers. Are some getting charged more?
Yeah, Michael can speak to the, the, the actual fees that have been charged.
Typically, right now, the actual fee that's being charged on the first go-around is $500 per day. However, if you do not abate, in other words, if you do not stop what's occurring, it can move to a cease and desist, which can be as much as $10,000 per day.
And where does that money go to the general fund?
Goes straight to the state. So it's either, you know, we, we tried to alleviate what's occurring now or we pay them later.
Mayor and council, I, as we prepared this, it is, certainly understand the concerns represented by the public comments. And, and as I mentioned at the outset, that the hand, the, the prohibition on sprinklers is, is, is more than what most are doing. I would ask that, that you consider, consider that in light of the other comments, but also even if, if the, the prohibition on, on sprinklers feels like that is more, more heavy-handed than you'd like to do, to at least consider the other, the other items being proposed this evening in terms of the increase in fines going to one day a week and those types of things. Because we, we do need to take some additional action to demonstrate to the state that we, we heard them and that we are, you know, as a city, showing leadership. I would also like to add that all the, all the water in our parks have been, has been turned off. So if you see some, if you see watering, that's because something's happened. It's, it's, it's a malfunction of some kind, but it's.
And we shut off down the mediums several months ago. Unfortunately, the, what is that? The society garlic still thrives. If we go to one day a week watering, here's, here's a problem I've seen. And I've, people have come up and told me about, well, I water once a week or twice a week, but I water three times during each day. And, and that's, that's not the right thing to do either. If we go to one watering a week, which I know is almost as draconian, but not as quite, we'll still have watering what is not necessary. In my opinion. As, as we go through the average of the months. If we say once a week, would we be agreeable to extend the time beyond 48 hours, make it to 72 hours after a rain event?
I don't understand why we don't need to turn off our sprinklers from December to May, to May 1st. I, I turned mine off weeks ago. And I, I won't turn it on till May. There's no reason we have to have our sprinklers on right now. Yes, I'm not for turning our yards and having no, nothing. I follow the guidelines strictly on the watering stuff and my lawn didn't look great, but didn't die. I had plants in my backyard. I ended up planting this beautiful garden and I had sprinklers break in the backyard and I didn't even replace it. I just turned it off. And yes, I lost plants in the backyard. But I thought, eh, I'm the only one that has to look at those. So, and they're already coming back. So I, I just personally do not have an issue with turning our sprinklers off from December to May. And I'll stand by that one. Just, that's me personally. There's no reason why we need to have our sprinklers on between December and May.
Right, I turned, I turned mine off too. And I, I just have a concern for our elderly, you know? They think that they need to get out there and try to water, hand water their lawns. And it's, it will be an added burden for businesses, as was stated. If you try to hand water, you need to hire somebody to do it. You know, maybe your landscape is gonna add that into a, an additional cost for you. I don't want it to be a burden for the businesses either or the commercial owners, but I, I don't have a problem with turning it off. I don't see why you can't turn it off during the winter months.
Well, it's not only just lawns. I also have ornamental shrubs and everything. I don't, I don't water any of it. I don't water any of it and nothing dies. And I don't think mine are necessarily drought-resistant plants, to tell you the truth. I, I just, I don't know. That's just me.
I'd just like to make a comment. I've turned my water off also and I won't use it probably till next spring. And my lawn's doing okay. It's not great. But at the same time, I'd like to reach out to the public because we've heard comments where you've seen water being misused. Well, you know what? You have a responsibility. We can't be everywhere and everybody can't be everywhere. If you see it, you need to report it to us so that we can, you know, deal with it here at City Hall. I personally witnessed a, a local bank two weeks ago when we had a rainstorm on a Saturday afternoon. I drove by it and the sprinklers were full blast, 3 o'clock in the afternoon and on, you know? And I mentioned that to our city manager that, and hope that something will be done with it. So we have that responsibility too. This is something very important that we all have to share the responsibility for together.
So that's a no.
I'll just chime in. I think that we can definitely stop using our automated sprinkler systems between December and May. I think that's, that's a reasonable request. I know I put buckets in my shower and take the gray water to, to water the porch plants and the patio plants and that kind of thing. I don't have the time to go out and do hand watering in the garden, but I think if we go by the, what I think you indicated, that you could stand there and, and turn on the drip system and the plants for a certain, you know, five minutes or something, and that that would suffice, then I think we could probably handle that as well.
As long as, you know, you don't have squirters and.
Right.
That's the purpose of having it being observed.
That's what I meant, the drip and, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'll bring it to the council for recommendation and our action.
The only thing I want to be really clear on before I go and vote on anything is that this goes through May. Now, on May.
Goes to May.
To May, I'm, yeah. December 1st to May 1st is what I'm reading here. And then after that, we go back to what we had currently.
You'd have to revisit it at that point, right?
Yes, we have to revisit whether we go back to two days a week or whatever the state, because the state will be coming on up with new guidelines in January. Whether or not we have sufficient rainfall, I can't see the state saying the drought's over, no matter what.
Yeah, I agree with you there.
Because the annual event won't be happening until late January.
Wouldn't even be enough to.
For approximately three months. So, do we have a motion?
Well, can we kind of revise it? I mean, I would like to talk about increasing the fines. I think that that would, that would help to get the message out that this is a serious situation and that people need to take it more seriously. So I don't know how we want to revise the.
That's part of the, that's part of the motion. I mean, that's part of the resolution. You want to even increase it above what's out there?
What we're proposing?
Yeah, you want to increase it even higher than what's being proposed?
Oh, no, no, no. Just make sure that that's what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
We are, we are. There you go. From a warning to a $100 fine.
Mm-hmm.
To, to put it in perspective about people not observing, is that even though we had minimal fines up there, we do have someone that has over a $900 water bill because of fines. So that, you know.
No.
They must be draining it and filling it every day. No, 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 that was, we're not talking. So that's a, a perspective. So that would be a heck of a fine if they continued watering the way they, they're watering now. We may be owning a new home. Okay, so any changes to what the resolution says? Do you want to go to restrict it to one day a week watering or to the way it states? And if we go to one day a week, I'd like to increase the timing between rain events.
I don't think we need to go to one day a week. I mean, hand watering in there, if you have some, I mean, this covers it. If you need something, like I have two, two fruit trees that are in containers, of course I'm gonna water them during the winter, they need it, but only on occasion. So this, this covers anything that we're talking about.
Okay.
So I propose that we go with the resolution as stated. And that would be my recommendation.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 in a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, Strategic Plan Objective Regarding Proposed Fundraising Event to Renovate City Facilities.
Mayor and members of the City Council, during the strategic planning session earlier this year, there was a strategic plan objective to develop and present to the City Council a direction for a plan for a fundraising event that raises funds for one or more of the needed projects, specifically the, the pool locker rooms, the community center renovation in Jacob Myers Park, completion of the, the parking and amphitheater. The individuals that were assigned to do this were Parks and Recreation Director Sue Fitzpatrick and Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz with input from the community organizations. And so in response to this, Councilmember Jones Cruz and Sue Fitzpatrick met and developed a, a general plan for a fundraiser, a Crab Fest. And that was initially proposed in, in a discussion that took place at the mayor's annual meeting with the nonprofit and faith-based community on November 4th. During the course of that discussion, because of the, the nature of the, the number of people at that meeting, the number of council meetings that are, the number of council members that are participating in nonprofit groups and faith-based groups, that we, we actually scheduled that as a regular city council meeting, excuse me, as a special city council meeting. And so it was a, a formal meeting, but, but it was a unique meeting because there were 30 people in the audience and there was a desire to just really focus on what those issues are for the, the nonprofit and faith-based communities. So when a presentation for a Crab Fest, a draft flyer for a potential event was, was presented, there wasn't the, the normal opportunity for discussion and review of an event that the city might have a role in. And so this item has been scheduled this evening for the council to weigh in in a more formal setting and allow Councilmember Jones Cruz to elaborate on what went into the preparation of the, the draft flyer and some of the proposals that were talked about in terms of being able to split funds between the city and community groups and to give a council, the entire city council an update. And so this is the, the draft flyer that was presented. And then there, on the back of it, there was some information on, on a possible way of, of splitting up the funds and some of the tasks that would be needed. And you'd see that. I do have copies of this as well that I can pass out for the, the audience. But did want to just kind of lay that out for consideration and hand it over to Councilmember Jones Cruz to talk a little bit more about this proposed event.
Thank you, Jill. I guess where I want to start is I just want to kind of reiterate that this was part of the strategic plan to enhance public safety, improve, maintain infrastructure and facilities. And we recognized at the strategic planning session that we had a need for some of the facilities and, and we don't have a lot of funding sources. So that was, and we all were in attendance there. And the objective that came out of that was to develop and present to the City Council for direction, a plan for a fundraising event that raises funds for one of those. So that's kind of the background of, of where this came about. And when Sue and I met, the one thing that we talked about was to, I know we were interested in doing two things, two separate fundraisers, one probably in February and one in March, but I'd really like to kind of focus on what the strategic plan says and kind of stick to that because at that point in time, that's what's on the record, public record. So with that said, the fundraiser flyer that was presented at the community, our nonprofit group night was just a draft to kind of get something out there in paper so people could understand what we were talking about. My intentions, and all along with Sue and I, was to kind of get the nonprofit groups together so that we could combine and pool all of our efforts. We all do our own fundraisers. We all do all kinds of things for the community and our main focus is to support Riverbank in its, and its endeavors. But we also use all the facilities here. Every one of our groups in the nonprofit, at some point in time, use these facilities and the facilities are aging. And you hear the Budget Advisory Committee saying that we need this and our community center kitchen doesn't meet code and there's all kinds of stuff that, that needs to be done. We need HVAC systems and, and we just, we need more police officers and, and we just don't have the funds to do it. So we were trying to come up with a creative way. So that was, my whole intention here was to hopefully gather and get people together to combine the, all the nonprofits, you know? Your mightier is one than, than, you know, five or, five or six small people doing something. So divide and conquer was my, my goal in working with Sue and coming up with this. So with that said, with that said, I know there were some questions at the meeting and one of them was the division of the profits. And my intentions and what I would like, I would like the groups that are interested in doing this to actually determine how they want to split the profits. My thoughts personally is that we're doing this to raise funds for the city, so I'd like to see the majority of it, but I'm not the only one. So you can kind of see, I don't, I don't want to go into a whole lot of background here. I don't want to take any more time. We've kind of dragged this meeting on, along, but I guess I'll kind of stop there. I guess what I'd like to see forward is that if you look at the back of the flyer, there were some dates proposed for some things. There's already six groups that have committed to the fundraiser already that want to do this. And I would like to go forward with the dates that are presented on there. The only thing that's not on there is that we need to kind of meet as a group. And I think there's three things I'd like each member of the groups that are wanting to do this to come together and three, focus on three things, to vote on the percentage of the split that they want to do. I'd like to kind of see a name of this nonprofit group instead of just calling them nonprofit and faith, faith-based. So I was kind of hoping that maybe we could come up with a, a catchy title of something to call the group of all of the nonprofits and then to hash out any details. So that's kind of where we were at with it. I just wondered if any of you have any questions?
On this fundraiser, is it necessary for the city to receive funding on that, on this when you have, what is your expected total, around $30,000?
Actually, probably closer to 15.
I'm talking total and then you have your, your invoices that you have to pay.
Right. Say that again. What are you asking me again?
Total, total in, take?
Yes.
What do you have, 300?
Yeah, 345.
Times? How much? How many, how much are you selling a ticket for?
Forty-five.
Would you have a bar too? Because usually the bar takes in quite a bit on these events.
There is a bar and to, there will be an auction, a live auction, a silent auction, a bar, and sponsors, so.
Question. Who's going to?
Hold on, he had a question.
No, no, on that amount.
You asked me about the city, I didn't understand what you're asking me.
Is it necessary for the city to be profit sharer on this?
Is it necessary?
Yeah.
No, it's not necessary.
Yeah, because the reason I'm asking that is that there are some, well, the city's going to get a majority for your, probably your profit of around $8,000 is what your profit should be after invoicing.
Yes, correct.
About $8,000. And that seems like if we did this event, it should be strictly with nonprofits, for nonprofits. And I would like to see a citywide event that the city is in control of, and if we need help, we solicit for nonprofits to pay them. In this case, this is a low-yield event, and significant for a nonprofit like your group would need, if they got 20% of the profits, would, you know, that'd be significant for you. So I don't think, in this case, for the crab feed, and this first one, should be part of the split. I would like to see us go at a focus of a day-long event where, you know, if you, whatever you sell, the city gets the profit on it, and at the end, come up with some type of an event where, such as a community dinner where everything goes to the city. But in a crab feed, your cost, your time and effort, and your profits, your time and effort and cost are greater than your profits. So taking a look at that, I've had a lot of nonprofits saying, what are you trying to do with that? And I know what we're trying to do, but it doesn't make sense with that amount of time, effort, and total cost. I think that that would be better off, better use, as if we went with the community center crab feed that profits only the nonprofits, benefits only the nonprofits. And try to go after other events where you can get together, as I said, you know, some of the individuals who would say, well, that's a healthy community, therefore I can contribute as a organization. Same thing with this is an event for, you know, bringing the community together, another organization can also contribute. To a crab feed, you won't get those community inputs, I mean, those organizational inputs into it, and that's what I think we should go for. Maybe even get one to say, in one of those events, if you have a successful event, I'll match it and see what we can get, but really one is a sugar daddy. But I think in this, at least the first one, the city's cut should be nil, and that is the community's nonprofits.
Well, if that's the case.
And still take.
I guess if that's the case, though, then what's the rationale for all the nonprofits to getting together? Because they already do all their fundraisers, they're not psyched to, and I can only speak for one group, I'm a part of a one group, and I convinced them that, you know, if we all get together, we don't have to, one, do a ton of work, you can do a part of work and still get some profit, but you're giving back to the city. And we use the community center for one of our big events for a nonprofit group that I am involved with, and we know that it needs some, it needs some help. So, I mean, why would we, I mean, why would the nonprofit groups, the only reason that we did this in the spirit of this was to come up with a way to, and I'm not saying this is, this is it, I'm just throwing out, this is an idea that we can do. And it's a first attempt, and why not try something? Something that's attainable and something that groups are willing to commit to, and yeah, it might be 8,000, but jeez Louise, that's more than we bring in for the Cheese and Wine Festival.
I understand that.
So, that's just.
Okay. But if you bring in 8,000, and you even give any cut to the city, even if it's close to, let's say, 30%, that diminishes what the nonprofits, it still can be a community event, it still can be under the umbrella for the community, and I hope it still goes forward. But I just want to express that the city does not need to be a recipient of the funds of any profits. That we should concentrate on a bigger event, like over the edge, just throw everybody off the Galaxy Theater, I mean, or off the big water towers. But something like that, where we can have more, wider participation from organizations that lean towards that. Okay? That's all, that's the reason why I believe this is up here today. Was there a staff report with this?
The staff report with that is that this is, this was a response to a strategic plan objective, and the, my interpretation of this is that because the community groups, and I believe a number of them have already committed in concept, is that this would be an activity that would be driven 95% by the community groups, with so very little staff support would be needed. We would anticipate giving the building for free and providing maybe some aides at the site, but we wouldn't be involved in having to do the silent auction, the live auction, and so anything that the community groups might want to start as seed money towards the start of maybe raising money for grant funds would be a bonus for us. The concern that I have, and you've heard me say this very frequently, is that we have a very small staff, and in looking at the events that we have, is that to be able to devote additional staff time to that means something else is going to need to fall off the wayside, which maybe is a good thing. But at the moment, we do not have the, to do a major event, a major one-day event, it would most likely need to be late 2016 or in 2017 unless we built on the existing events such as Riverfest or the Cheese and Wine. And the Cheese and Wine might have some more money-making opportunities, we've only had it for two years, Sue's evaluating the numbers. But those are expected to be discussed in further detail after the first of the year when we have the final numbers from Cheese and Wine. Tonight is, you know, can, is the council, where is the council in terms of letting this move forward and seeing what happens, and let the community groups decide whether they want to give 5% or 10% or 50% or no percent? Essentially, it would be, if they got, my perspective is that if they got involved in this, they would be doing community service by raising money for the city, which they generally do anyway, because they usually give the money back to the community in some form or another. So I see, maybe those are two separate discussions, we have the discussion about this particular event, and then a larger discussion about doing something of larger significance and larger demand on the city sometime after the first of the year.
Okay. This is a discussion, it's not a decision-making. I would prefer that it, you know, goes forward. And with the religious groups, nonprofits participating in it, if they desire, and you split it between them, because this could be a big event, it could make a lot of money, but when you divide it up, it would be more beneficial at the nonprofit religious groups. And I don't think the city would benefit that much from it, other than bringing the community together, which is a significant value.
Can I express my concerns?
Sure, yeah, you can.
I have several concerns. First of all, we've got some other events coming up, like Riverfest, which we may or may not do, it depends on what we decide. Secondly, as we do more events, as our city manager said, we're putting more pressure on our city staff if we involve the city more directly, and I don't want to see a staff that short have to say, start plowing other events that, you know, putting them under the, understaffing even more, and it makes it difficult for them. And I think too that we needed to have more discussion the night that we had this particular meeting, and we just ran out of time. I got several people making comments to me about, they didn't really feel like they had a chance to really have any input into anything. And so I think we need to look at all that stuff. I'd like to proceed, but I think we need to involve the discussion, you know, with per se the nonprofits to help decide what that's, what's going to be and what the event's going to be, but we ran out of time and really didn't get to that point when we had the nonprofit meeting that night. So those are just concerns that I have.
I don't know that that was really the place or the time to have that kind of discussion. It was mainly an informational, here's an idea, and I see that some of those concerns would probably be a better venue to have it when you're actually going to do it and let the groups decide what they want to, what they want to split.
But that's where we're headed right now, you know, so we need to do it sometime if we're going to do it, because it wasn't done then.
Well, you have to meet.
It wasn't the forum for it, that was.
It wasn't, all it was, it was an informational piece, saying this is an idea, so. And I would really like to see the groups that are participating decide on what they, what they want to, to do with it. So I'm agreeing with you 100%.
And I hope they decide, yeah.
I'm agreeing with you 100%, but it just, it wasn't the, I'd like those groups to do it.
Totally understand what you're saying, but I'm relating to you comments that I got because the meeting didn't turn out exactly like what you had planned it to be. That's all I'm sharing with you. And I do think we need to involve the nonprofits in the discussion more per se. I agree, maybe this was a presentation, but some of the people didn't take it in that manner, you know, so we need to correct that.
Any other comments?
I'm encouraged that the community groups want to get together to do the fundraising for our community projects, and I think that's something that we should, you know, we should continue the discussion so that we don't squelch their enthusiasm and their desire to do what they see as a noble cause in helping the city with some of these much-needed projects, as Councilmember Jones Cruz pointed out, for facilities that these community groups use on a regular basis, you know, and that are aging. So whether it's this particular event or another larger event, I think the discussion needs to, you know, and I think we need to keep the momentum up and keep people excited about this opportunity to feel like they're really doing something to contribute to the, to the health of the facilities in the city.
Well, my group was all for participating and being a part of this, we thought it was a great idea, and we were looking forward to it. So I would like to see the groups that are interested in contributing to this project, get together, talk it out, and see what steps need to happen next, how we can agree on moving forward with it.
Okay, and I'm sure hoping that it continues, and are you still the lead?
Until someone else says something differently, I guess.
No, you're still the lead. Heck, no, I'm not going to step in that Southeast Asian landmine. So now we go on to item seven.
So just to clarify for protocol, is, there's a desire to meet, is having Councilmember Jones Cruz meet with the group and then report back to the city council on the progress, is that inappropriate?
Or it just advises how it's going, yeah.
That, is that, super, that's how we'll proceed. I'll also proceed with the thought that if the city is getting any kind of profit, that essentially there's a fee waived, the fees will be waived for, for the building use?
Yes.
Yes.
But that's a decision that we're trying to make, but we haven't agendized that.
That's correct, but I understand if the city is getting.
You want direction.
Kind of just some general direction of going through there, and we can, the budget can be set, if that's, just kind of thinking about that in advance, keep the process. So since it's, we do have a little bit of time after the first of the year. So moving on to item seven, I had scheduled a closed session as a placeholder, I don't believe that that closed session is necessary.
No, that is not necessary.
And so in terms of staff, I'll let you speak to the rest of the agenda.
No, we're going, I'll do that when I hit the item eight.
So for staff comments, essentially, it is just to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and at the conclusion of the weekend on Saturday, or, excuse me, at the beginning of the weekend, after everybody's recuperated from Black Friday and Thanksgiving turkey dinner, to come on out to the City of Riverbank Craft Fair, which starts at noon, be right out here in downtown, stay for the parade that'll start about 5:30 PM, and the tree lighting, which will follow that. So it should be a great day for families and individuals and anybody looking for special unique items at the craft fair, and just the parade is a phenomenal community event for just seeing everybody come out, the kids in particular, really fun to see them all lit up. So if you want to start off your holiday season with a bang, come on out and enjoy the community on Saturday, the 28th of November, and happy Thanksgiving.
I'm going to depart here in a moment and turn it over to the vice mayor, but I would like to make my comments, skip to 7.3, just real briefly. We are doing sidewalks along Roselle right now. I'm not as enthusiastic as what was stated, and I would like us to formally take a look at the sidewalks around these telephone poles that are blocking passage of those with wheelchairs or ADA. And if we can't go into the properties, is it possible to go out into the streets, you know, have a jetty out? All right? Could you pass that to the vice mayor? Vice mayor, we're not having item eight and nine. Okay. I have to get back to work, excuse me.
Councilmember Jones Cruz, any?
No, I don't have anything else.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, I'd just like to take a moment to say that I had the privilege of riding in the Modesto Veterans Parade, along with several other residents that were veterans from Riverbank, and we took the Historical Society Fire Engine there, and it was great, just brilliant. Eddie, he was one of the veterans that rode with us, and the people were just really enthused about seeing the fire engine. My guess is it was probably one of the oldest, if not the oldest vehicle in the parade, and I know we were definitely the oldest fire engine. And I know that Ben and Diane Talbot were there taking pictures, which we passed on to the Riverbank News, and it was just really neat because we had two former mayors, one World War veteran and, World War II veteran, and one Vietnam veteran, and what I really enjoyed was hearing the World War II veteran keep putting the other one down. He just didn't put up with any nonsense of Charlie at all. But it was a delightful experience for myself, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, I'm going to keep mine very brief, I have a lot, but I'll just mention just a few things. I attended the webinar for the 2015 Legislative Briefing, and I learned a lot so that I could better understand and pass on to my colleagues about what the recent legislative means to our city and our area, and so there was, just a lot of wealth of information that we, that they talked about. And also, the North County Corridor meeting, we're going to have a public meeting on January 28th here in Riverbank, so I hope everyone gets a chance to come out to that. And Citizen and Youth of the Year nomination process has been extended to December 17th at 5:00, and the forms are available on our city website. And I too want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And we have no item eight and no item nine, so I guess I can adjourn. Oh, you have anything else?
I actually do need you just to open up item nine, Conference with Legal Counsel Antisipal litigation, for any public comment on that, even though we won't be going into closed session.
Okay, so item nine, open it up for public comment, questions? Seeing no comments or questions, then we will adjourn our meeting. Oh, yes?
Can I bring to your attention, here, there is a contradictory on the. Can I bring to your attention here, there is a contradictory on the Friday closers, it's Friday, November 27, and December 11 is hours 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but then it says November 26 and 27, city's closed for Thanksgiving holiday, and it's contradictory because it's supposed to be the 27, it's supposed to be an open Friday, but it's the day after Thanksgiving, so I want to verify that so it won't be contradictory to the rest of the items. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for noticing that. So our city council meeting for tonight is adjourned, thank you.